All right, we'll open up the. Uh, planning board meeting for January ninth, twenty twenty four. Uh, this is being conducted pursuant to the general laws in a hybrid manner. Uh, if anybody's reporting that is fine, you just need to let us know. Okay. Uh, seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, okay, just a couple of things to report on. Uh, one business item that came across my desk. Relates to a small wedge of land at the far eastern side of town of Feeding Hills Road. Uh, that has come up for a tax taking. Um, this is right as the topography. Darkly slopes upward. From Feeding Hills as you cross the south look line. The question that um was brought to my attention was whether or not this would be a suitable location. Uh, for a public safety communications uh power. Uh, the elevation alone would allow to have good coverage across town uh at a. Somewhat reduced height over the, what are the maximum thresholds in our revised bylaw? Um, I think it's a tough bit at the moment, but one will be bringing everyone's attention that we're looking at it, we're gonna run it through the um. The parameters. Um, of our most recently revised wireless communications facilities by law. And see where the fit is. My first pass at it tells me that regrettably, this specific parcel is just too small. To get the necessary separation to property lines adjacent to residences. Uh, yes, I think it's, that's part of how we started to build in some of the minimum protections while giving, we'll call it site by site. Flexibility. Uh, so some of the shells have mandated distances, I don't think you can fit within that specific parcel. And there is a residential parcel right up uh adjacent to that pushing elevation up the hill.
So the right?
If you're headed towards South Lake, it'd be on the right hand side.
Okay.
Uh, there's a small wedge of land. A budding within South Lake, some state land, and then uh the former quarry. Um, would be beyond that, so this is. While, while it's a nice little hilltop. Um, for a touch of location, I think we're gonna find that it's just too small.
Okay.
But just a piece of news passing over my desk. Uh, to follow up on some discussion uh from the last meeting regarding a little bit of redirection. Um, to our forthcoming work with PVPC. Uh, the inclination from the board was to. Rather than honing with such focus to our open space residential. Um. Development by our F R D by law. Uh, and subdivision regulations, let's zoom out a bit and let's do zoning diagnostic, if you will. Um, so that with a broader brush, PVPC can uh come in and highlight areas that. Over time, perhaps, um. Have created certain vulnerabilities or missed other opportunities. So to follow up on that uh discussion from the last meeting. Mr. Colmia will be providing with a few uh helpful guidance paragraphs, so I don't mince words uh in terms of what was originally penned. Um, under the grant application from PVPC, I'll submit that over to the state after the review and hopefully we'll have an answer by the next meeting. Uh, so we can hit the ground running as we uh work through. The coming parts of winter. Uh, let's see. That's it for the moment.
Did you want to bring up the uh? No, Steve.
We do have a few, well, we've been kept on uh several enforcement uh related. Bits of correspondence from the building department. One of which uh includes the, you know, most of the subdivisions in its current new construction. Due to a number of factors, both the owner's policy, its construction status. Um, as well as I would say some slow progress. Um, since probably the voice's last opportunity to engage um with the developer. There's been, I'm gonna say not quite a steady stream, and we saw some correspondence over the summer, at least. Uh, from uh residents in the area expressing concern. Um. And so to, to that end, uh, the building department. Did share um. Some continued correspondence and concerns and making sure that the town is uh. Both protected um as well as encouraging the developer to move forward.
All right, uh, seven oh five, public comment, anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? Okay, Steve. We will hop over to seven ten P M, six sixty two A College Highway, continued public hearing.
How you doing?
Good, come on up. Just uh put your name and address on the record if you could for.
I'm Jim Boyle, and I live at twenty six Fisnet Circle. Definitely.
Um, and hi, I'm Doug Searle with Berkshire Design Group, uh, we're working with uh Jim Boyle and we're uh supporting him submitting the application. I'm also uh joined by Chris Chamberlain, who's on the Zoom call, and William Von Fricken, that's. Uh, part of uh, uh, Frank Ralph Architects, uh, that were uh responsible for uh the building architecture uh for the storage facility.
Okay.
So anyways, um, my name is Jim Boyle, I'm here with Ellen, my wife, um, to go over six sixty two College Highway, as Doug had just said. Um, and uh, so we first proposed this project early in uh two thousand twenty three. And uh, after receiving uh some comments from the planning department, uh, fire department, uh, the DPW and other stuff. Um, uh, we had some changes to make on the plan. Um, as well as we're moving it through, um, we had to file an N O I for the project, so we're moving it through concurrently with um, with you guys. Uh, so after our team, um, after working with our team and the conservation commission, I'm happy to report, we received approval for the project last night. Uh, we received an order of condition from the conservation commissions. So tonight, um, Doug and Chris from Berkshire Design will describe the project. William will jump in to talk about the building or answer any questions that you have pertaining to the architecturals. And then I'll go over um what me and the fire chief came up with and um to address all the concerns we we had for the last meeting. So we addressed all those um uh on the plan and stuff like that, so.
Do we have a uh new plan that we are electronically that we were able to put up online or no?
I believe so.
Yes, okay. Oh, we just pull that up before you guys start.
So I'm gonna kick it over to Doug and let him get going, so he can describe the stuff and I'll be back up for the uh.
Great, thanks, Jim. Uh, so hi, my, my name's Doug Searle, uh, I've got a uh local style easel, uh, this is the same plan that John is bringing up onto the screen, so. It's just a pretty, I'll bring it up a little closer. Uh, uh, so uh, this was the first plan that's.
Want, just let him bring it up so that.
Absolutely.
We can keep the folks online.
That sounds great.
Looking at it at the same time.
And I'm on just page two of that presentation, John.
Perfect. I said, perfect, everything was better.
Okay, perfect. Uh, very briefly, just on the first slide, just to orient you, this was the uh, uh, initial survey that was submitted uh with the original application. Uh, the site uh was redesigned, there was various feedback from uh Conservation Commission, and most importantly, they were uh concerned about the uh wetland delineation. Uh, we had a, uh, Jim hired an additional uh wetland uh scientist uh to do delineation and they revised that uh. And that triggered a essentially a redesign of the site, uh. The wetlands that run across the uh parcel itself, um, uh. Required, you know, finally for a limited project with Conservation Commission for the site. Uh, so this is the parcel here, this is six X two A uh College Highway, it's approximately three point. Uh, one, seven acres uh of a site, it is uh currently undeveloped, it's partially forested on the eastern end. And uh kind of managed old fields on the uh western end and is bisected by. Any uh bordering vegetated wetland that runs uh through the site, it was the western side of this that was revised uh. Uh, in the uh more recent delineations around July, and so we had revamped the uh site plan. Uh. Based around those wetlands. So the proposed site uh starts off with a uh curb cut off of College Highway. Uh, that integrates a new uh concrete sidewalk, this is all. Uh, up to mass DOT standards after going through the town permitting process for special permitted. Uh, with DPW and uh Conservation Commission, uh, the next phase would be submit for uh, uh, an access permit uh with mass DOT, so we're sort of starting off at. Uh, at their uh standards, uh, ran out to twenty six foot uh wide driveway uh that for two way traffic that uh. Uh, enters through the sites, uh, crosses over the uh wetland with uh and uh three sided uh. Uh, open bottom concrete culvert uh with the uh precast concrete block retaining walls uh on either side of the. Uh, crossing, uh, and then uh maintains a twenty six foot wide width. Uh, around the building, but it changes to a one way flow, uh, uh, kind of loop around the building. Uh, and uh, the uh site itself, what is proposed is a storage facility, a two story uh storage facility. Uh, with a twenty nine thousand four hundred square foot footprint. So, uh, and a uh one story office building with a six hundred and sixteen square foot footprint, in the end. Uh, the total amount of gross uh floor area is. Is uh fifty nine thousand, I think, four hundred and sixteen square feet, so we're just below the. Threshold, uh, sixty thousand square foot threshold of a major development review. Um, there are three parking spaces that are associated with the office building, the office building is intended for, for essentially one staff member. Uh, and so there are, there are three spaces there for a staff member and for occasional uh visitor that would come through for a patron. Um, those parking spaces are ten by uh twenty square feet, they are more than ten feet away from the building. And they are oriented where they are, meaning facing the street, uh. Because uh they can't be on the side or behind the building due to limitations of the zoning setbacks, the wetland buffer and uh. The location of uh the wetlands themselves, so those restrictions are are uh. Required in that we, that we place it uh on the streetward side of it, now it is uh more than twenty feet away from the, the property line uh towards the street. Uh, and the two neighboring properties are both commercial properties, so there's not a residential uh property conflict. Uh, with the location of that, of that parking lot. Uh, also in the same area, there's a tentative location for uh. The trans electrical transformer for the site that the utility would have to ultimately decide where, where that would go. Uh, adjacent to that building is uh a proposed location uh for the uh septic system, which is being designed by. Uh, by a uh third party for uh for that, it was previously entirely designed for the previous uh. Uh, uh, site design, um, and it's in the process of being submitted back to the uh Board of Health uh under the. Uh, the new configuration here, it's uh, it's the minimum size that's required for that, which we have responded to in, in a series of. Uh, responses to, to comments uh from uh from town planner and from other departments recently. Uh, is that it, the minimum size is significantly larger than what is actually needed for one employee for this building, so it's. More than adequately sized to handle the use of one employee and the occasional uh patron. Uh, just moving past that building, moving west, there is to be a, a fence gate there just to deter other non patrons, non uh storage. Uh, facility renters uh from entering the site, but uh otherwise, due to the distance setback from the road, there's not fencing that's proposed all the way around the site. Uh, so you uh drive through up to that next building, it's a two story building uh with access on the west side of the lower level and uh. Uh, doors on the north side and south side, and then access to the second floor uh on the far east side. Uh, there's uh four different uh. Loading spaces that are ten by twenty each size, uh, that are positioned next to uh each of the two doors on the south and two doors on the north. Uh, and a larger, uh, it's about ten by hundred and twenty five foot loading area. Uh, that should accommodate five cars, the intention of the loading areas versus a parking spot is just to be temporary. Parking for, for uh patrons that are just unloading uh or, or loading uh. Uh, there, to their storage facility, it's positioned next to where the pedestrian doors would be, those doors have. Uh, two bollards proposed to each one just for the safety of, of the patron going in and out of the building. Um, and uh, then uh, the way that uh stormwater works for the sites. Let's see if I'd like to share. So. Uh, John, now flipped over to uh the utility plan, which is a, uh, I'll see one. Thank you. Uh, perfect, so uh, starting at the east end of the site, um. Uh, the uh proposed building is uh. Uh, the uh downspouts are directed to the east. Uh, to uh infiltration chamber underground to be able to capture the runoff uh from the rooftop. And then surface runoff from this area is directed to a uh storm scepter to be able to handle and catch, pre-treat all the sediment from the surface runoff. Uh, to meet uh state stormwater standards, and then that uh ultimately uh is uh overflows into the um. Northwest corner of the site after it's been uh treated and, and contained, uh. Trying to promote infiltration as, as best we can uh with the infiltration chambers. Uh, uh, under the uh pavement there on the side of the site. Water from the western uh side of the building and rooftop and then uh downslope. Of, of these uh roadways, the slopes of these road uh drive lanes are about seven and a half percent. Uh, going uh up on the south side and, and uh, and downslope uh on the north side. Uh, that water, uh, the surface flow and the, and the rooftop is uh directed to infiltration uh chambers that are positioned here under the asphalt on the east side. Or sorry, on the west side, and also a uh storm scepter. Uh, located uh just at the edge of um. A uh asphalt curbing, and then that is directed into uh infiltration basin there. Uh, to uh promote infiltration, capture the water there, and then there's uh, you know, safety overflow that eventually after that water's been treated, sediment's been removed. Uh, for only the really largest of storms, uh, would there be overflow that would then be directed, you know, over towards the wetland, so really it's. Being oversized so that it'll capture um, uh, large storms, I'll, I'll have to defer to Chris Chamberlain, our engineer, who's on the Zoom call for specifics on that if you have further questions. Um, the, and then there's a second infiltration chamber to capture the runoff uh from the proposed drive lane. Uh, from uh, uh, the eastern side, or sorry, the western side of the, of the entrance and the parking area uh in the office building, um. Uh, to be able to capture with um. A um, uh, check dam outlet here and uh, and then it, and then the infiltration chamber. Here with the, with the overflow uh that would redirect. Uh, you know, water to, to drain into the site after being uh treated by the infiltration chamber. The crossing is necessitated, uh, crossing takes uh impacts of about nineteen hundred ninety square feet, about two thousand square feet worth of. Uh, the existing wetland and what was proposed with Conservation Commission was a four thousand square foot uh replacement area. Um, uh, that's uh positioned just to the uh west, northwest of the site, it's connected hydrologically uh. Integrating uh, uh, to that wetland, uh, and is proposed with a series of uh native. Uh, plants through that. And John, I'm now turning to sheet one four one. Plants, this is a planting plant for the site. Uh, there's a, a series of plants that are proposed, uh, uh, shrubs. Uh, in that uh wetland uh replacement area and uh herbaceous ground cover. Uh, in order to provide an increase of diversity and native species that would occupy that area, that would, that would grow densely and keep away, uh, try to. Uh, out compete the invasives that are basically rampant all through this old field and certainly into the wetland area there. Um, uh, along the uh, uh, street side of the property, there are four trees that are there to add to the streetscape and. Kind of diminish views into the site. Uh, as we go further east into the site, uh, there's a series of uh trees that are proposed along the wetland edge, they're proposed to be. To be like live stakes like willows uh and uh birch trees, so these are to be hand planted only, so we're. We, we mandate that there's, you know, nobody's coming in here with heavy equipment to plant those trees, those are, those are really done by hand with shovels. Uh, uh, and uh, then, but they're proposed to get, you know, quite large, like willow stakes are only several feet once you install them, but they'll be. Uh, thirty foot plus tall, and so what will be developed over, over the longer time is, is, is kind of an increased forested view, what is currently there as. Old field meadow with occasional shrubs and a lot of herbaceous granules. Uh, will, will have more of a forested look, so that building will be um. Partially visible, but uh the view may certainly be diminished on the property, the uh building that would probably be most uh visible would be the uh. Office building and uh, just to show a, a shot of the. Architecture there, so the uh building that's uh proposed for the two story uh storage facility. Uh, is uh shown here in elevations, this is uh sheets A two hundred, um, I'll just kind of roll through these briefly because uh. I uh, I know William Von Fricken from uh, um, Frank Ralph Architects uh could speak more to the details about the, the facilities, um. Uh, the Gestalt is, it's a, 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 a red averted panel building to mimic uh. Uh, the more regional uh barn vernacular and the office building is set uh with a hip roof. Um, uh, with a small eve uh to kind of mimic a residential feel that would be uh. Uh, kind of closer to the street view uh near the entrance. Um, so that's the initial overview of the project and I wanted to see if you had any questions.
The, one of the things that's bouncing around in my head around this, and I haven't, to be fair, given. On the thought about this project in a while, since it's been sort of continued on since, I, I don't even know when, um, but. The one thing we've had bouncing around is the. I want to use the terminology, right, is the reclamation area or the, the. Area. That you are now moving. Um, in front of the wetland area. Uh, that exists, right, on the. Northern side of the property. Is that now? And it's basically up close to the border of that north, the northern edge of the property, is that right?
Sure.
This is. It's, it's O'Reilly on the other side, is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you now creating a problem for O'Reilly with anything they want to do on that? Southerly side of their property by creating a, a buffer zone that they have to now. Um. Comply with?
Yeah, I can uh jump in, Chris Chamberlain, civil engineer, um, so that, that's actually a really sharp point, um, at, the, in fact, the reason that that location was chosen for the replication. Is that O'Reilly had to do their own replication on the opposite side of that property line, so this is uh sort of an extension of. A wetland system that's already been expanded on their side, so they already have. Created on their property sort of a, a do not touch area adjacent, and the hope is that, that those two artificial wetlands will start to reinforce each other.
Okay, so is that, I mean, I guess I'm trying to think through. It, does there? Is it just to the south of their entrance, I guess? Cause their entrance is pretty close to that border, isn't it?
Uh, but there's, there's a big retaining wall there that's holding up the driveway coming in, I think.
Uh. I don't know about coming in, but in the back, right, it's holding up the back.
Yeah, I don't have a aerial photo of.
No, no, that's fine.
But uh, but yes, it is this replacement uh wetland, so uh. You know, we're not, we're not proposing to, to, to lift the soils from the, the wetland that we're impacting and move them to this location, just to. Clarify that detail because there's such a high level of uh like reed canary grass amongst other non-natives that are in the area that are, that are such an invasive seabank. That we're bringing in uh other uh non-wetland soils, but there's a particular prescribed mix that meets with D E P uh, uh, in the wetland. Replication and wetland replacement guidelines uh that uh, uh, wetland scientist that works with G Z A that has been a sub consultant on this project. Uh, since the beginning uh with Jim, uh, has been guiding us through that uh, that, the details of, of that uh process. Uh, but essentially it is a, it is a replacement, it's hydrologically being designed so that it, it will connect into the flow of this, which is all very. Shallow, there's not really like a stream running through the site, um, but this uh area of elevation uh and uh soil mix will then. Uh, uh, be consistent with the soil mix and, and hydrology of that, of that site, but yes, as Chris had mentioned, it is. Just south of, of replacement wetland that was done uh for O'Reilly, so it doesn't really change their buffer that, because they're.
Yeah, and, and John, I think uh, i- if you, if I have power to share, I just pulled up an aerial photo of the area, I think, um. Uh, it's a good point, it's not the driveway, it is uh sort of their dumpster parking area uh that's held up by the wall, but. Um, I think. We take a look. Um, so you can sort of see where our wetland system comes through the site with the discoloration here. Um, and it's essentially this area here, as I understand it, and I wasn't involved with that project, I have seen one or two plans from it. Uh, was a replication area for the wetland, and ours is really proposed to fit sort of in this zone here. Um, and if we look at Doug's plan, you can start to see some of the contours. I believe our site is lower than this driveway, you can start to see the slope in this area off to the left of our proposed wetland. So what I would say is, you know, I couldn't say with certainty that there will be no increase in the buffer, but if there is. An increase in buffer extending uh onto that property will be quite marginal, uh, because they already have buffer that's starting really from the base of. Of the wall that they have in this area.
We discussed last night, um, that when we put the replication in place, that doesn't create a buffer. So when that replication gets done, that doesn't create, we don't have to. Create a new buffer zone, we're just filling in a replication area.
Yeah, but, but Michael's correct, that in the future, that will be wetlands and there will be buffer associated with it.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything else from the board before we turn to? Other folks?
We have the total and per view of surface area of the building and movement and driveway.
That's a great question, I do not, uh, Chris, do you happen to? Know that?
No, but I believe, oh, we had some communication with John, looking at the major development standards, um, and I believe we had that number in there, but I don't have it at my fingertips.
I know the building uh gross floor area, but not the asphalt uh square foot, so we can certainly get that.
Yeah. And also, I, I noted how you, you didn't call them parking spots. Um, but the loading zones around the building will in fact be places where people park, yes?
In fact, yes.
Okay, and. You know, it's not always a quick, I'm sliding a piece of paper under the door to my unit, and. So there needs to be safe places for people to park.
Sure.
Unload. And also maneuver around this driveway for other vehicles that are coming around. Is, it doesn't quite seem to me that there's a logical place that if I pulled up to the building, I could say, okay, this is where I'm supposed to park, I'm supposed to park safely. Um, and there also, if I remember correctly from previous readings of our IR zone. Parking spaces need to be away, you can't be right up against the building. So I'm just, I, my big concern is you're asking people to drive up. An incline where you can't necessarily see behind the building. You have the exterior storage facility type doors in the front and the rear of the building. So when I see people do that, they pull right up against those doors, they back, sometimes back up to them. So where I would think people are driving around, you, you run the risk. Of unsafe maneuvering for both people driving through as well as pedestrians and people trying to access. Um, especially if you have people with disabilities and things like that, so. That's highly concerning to me that if I had. You know, an ADA accessible van and needed to get out and park, where am I supposed to park? Safely and know that nobody's gonna be driving around the corner.
Sure, so it's a very valid concern, I, I appreciate your question, the driveline that's going around the building is, is twenty six feet wide, so this is.
If you park up against the building because you're gonna, you're trying to.
Correct.
Enter in the doors, that's.
Exactly.
At the very top of the driveway on either side in the back of the building.
Yeah, let me.
Drive up and then this is the door I'm supposed to enter and where am I supposed to park there while still.
There's a huge loading zone in the back, so in the back there's sixty feet.
There's enough space for, for there to be, uh, for vehicles to safely drive around this. There's enough space for for there to be, uh, for vehicles to safely drive around this loading zone, so this width back here is sixty feet.
So is the loading zone delineated somehow or there?
They would be striped on the ground. Uh, different than parking spaces that, you know, just have obviously like parallel stripes. And are intended for somebody to maybe be in those spaces all day, whereas these are intended for nobody's hanging out for hours at a time, but to.
Unless they're filling in their storage unit.
Correct, right, so they would, they would be there for that period of time, yes, that's true.
Right, so if I'm, if I'm coming to to visit.
Yep.
Quickly, let's say a fifteen minute, I'm looking for something or dropping something off.
Sure.
And somebody is loading into a new unit and they're parked in the loading zone on the side of the building. Well, then I can't park and load on my side of the building and my unit's all the way in the front of the building, so I'm parking back there in the loading zone. Where exactly is the loading zone, are cars supposed to park? Perpendicular to the building, are they supposed to be parked like this, are they supposed to be parked like this, please don't interrupt me, that's a little bothering me. So. There needs to be, I think, more specificity in that.
True.
Yeah.
So that ties in a little bit with the fire chief. And how we approached the loading zone. So, uh, when I met with the fire chief, um, I think you were here, uh, he had a lot of issues with what we were doing. He had nine points of things that he wanted to talk about. So I met with him. And at first we had two buildings on the property, um, one in the back and one in the front. And one of the suggestions the fire chief had right up the bat that he needed more room in the back. For safety for his guys and for people to be able to load and unload safely. So he asked me, uh, or he suggested that it'd be a lot easier if there was one building there. And it would give a lot more space and stuff like that, so. Him and I worked on the plan to come up with this, uh, with the loading zone back here and giving sixty feet. So most storage spots, and there's none in town that have that kind of room in storage areas, but we created that. So the ADA entrance is back here, there's one here, so if you're ADA, these contain stairs, you wouldn't go to that. Uh, and just to, uh, briefly, we have an office manager that works there. Daily from eight to five. So she brings people up, she explains how to get through there and all that stuff, and we have cameras all around. Of 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 people doing stuff, so when she brings people up. To explain the whole project, so yeah, people pull from up here willy nilly and just do what they just, what you, you know. Run around, but in a weird way, they're gonna have directions, you know, park and and unload and stuff like that, so. We created these on the side because that's what we talked about with the fire chief that they would be. And these are loading zones that not necessarily parking spots. So most of your, if you're gonna be loading, uh, most of your cars, you're gonna have to rap here and load. And here. And and stuff like that, so we have most of their sites up here, go ahead and dig, we come to this fat site. And all that, most of our smaller stuff is up here. And so you load all your stuff and what these side spots are intended for is just egresses, so there's more. And then also for easy access, so these are basically running spots, so if you need to go get something real fast. You would park here and just run and get your stuff and come back out. And that's kind of how we, um, you know, thought about that, and like I said, we have an office manager that's gonna be there every day. Um, she's been working, um, in storage for over twenty years and she's kind of militant, to be honest, and so when she. Brings people through, she doesn't really let people mess around. And she watches people, we watch what people actually bring in to their units and stuff like that. And and so just to add on for the safety stuff is, um. We put the, um, the, um, fire chief had, um, an issue with the fire connections and the fire hydrant. So instead of having the fire checkled up here, we brought him back down here, so when he pulls up and there's a fire here, he can connect out here. Push water up here for the sprinkler system or connect to his hydrant here. We actually, um, added a little sprinkler loading zone that has suggested that they can spray. So people understand what they are. Um, and I think like I said, back area is the most important part, so there's sixty feet back there, that's a massive amount of area. For a a fire truck can turn around back there and all that stuff and. Uh, we talked about not having a fence back there for, it's so far back and so up the hill that I I can't imagine anybody. A car can't get up there on the sides to do anything, so. Um, with having no fence out there, we can just, um, come up and if there is a problem, you know, the firemen can just walk off the property to the side. And so one of the other things we had was for the snow, um, that we had kind of no area for snow. Removal and basically all our snow is just gonna be in the back up here. When we, when we plow these things, we don't let it just snow twelve inches and then come to plow. Uh, we're plowing every couple inches, so it'd be easy just to push everything up here. And, uh, keep it all out of the way, so we don't really need anything down here either and stuff like that.
What's on the back of the property?
Yeah.
What's on the back of the property?
Oh, um.
Is it fenced?
Uh, no, there's, uh, we, we were trying not to have a fence back there. Um, so there's just, you know, just the kind of the rest of the property, there's another twenty, thirty feet here. Um, of this property, um, beyond the pavement.
Just a woodland area.
And then also, uh, in meeting with the fire chief, we came up with the one-way directions, so it is kind of not willy-nilly. Um, so you come up, you go around, there it'll be directly arrowed, so when you come up, there's arrows all the way around, so you can see it. And yeah, we can say that people won't listen, but like I said, I mean, um. When people, uh, get a unit and get it from us, they're gonna be given directions. And, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of an easy thing, once you get directions to follow it, yes, I'm sure somebody will cheat once in a while, but for the most part, we'll have. Um, just a common courtesy coming around who's going that way for the whole project. And stuff like that, so. So those kind of dealt with all his, um, all his concerns. Uh, I think he met, uh, he emailed John or called John and said he was happy with the plan.
What's the, what's the, um? What are the dimensions in the back?
Uh, what do you mean the pavement?
Yeah.
Uh, sixty, uh, sixty feet off the building by, um. Hundred and seventy-two. Why?
So I'm just trying to figure out. The car situation, I mean, so. The size of twenty-six feet, is that right? I mean. Look, so it's a one-way now, right, so. You're coming up. Driver's side against the building the entire way around. You're not parking up against the building because you can't get out of your car. Right, I mean, you're not. You're parking at least a few feet. Off of that building to get out of your car.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I would say. You're probably taking up. At least ten feet. If not more.
Yeah.
On that side of the building. Um, so you're cutting that down to. You know, sixteen, fifteen or less feet of area for cars to get by there. I'm trying to think through the back and how that works, I mean, I just, I don't. Calling them loading areas. You know, doesn't mean much to me, it's, it's what they actually are. I have never, and I'll go back and look. Um, at some of the ones that are. Some of the storage facilities and. You know, I know there's a couple down at Hartford and wherever else where they're built up like yours, right, where they're, they're. And not the ones that are sort of spread out and you have a lot of room. Those are the ones I'm certainly more familiar with around here. But I just, I've never seen a storage facility without parking spots. I just haven't, I mean, I, I'm not aware of one that doesn't have. Parking spots. I mean, I know people are going to go up near the building and run in and come out sometime, you know, at the certain places. But I've also. The fact that they're doing that doesn't change the fact that there are parking spots for them to park at and do it the right way. And so that's where I'm having some difficulty in trying to.
So.
Ask a question, so I just wanted. If you can clarify what you did, that you don't know any facilities. That don't have parking spaces for each. For each, for each unit or for each matrix?
So the ones that, you know, I mean, the, the ones that I think about are. Um, you know, there's certainly some in town, right, that they're sort of spread out and they're one-story and you can kind of park up and they have the garage doors, a lot of them, right? Not all of them, but most of them. Um, I think of the ones down by the airport, right, there's some of those bigger ones that have. You know, you can put RVs and whatever else in those things and those have parking spots all around. Um, that's the more one that I'm just more familiar with, I can picture. In my head more driving on the highway, some of the the larger storage facilities like in Hartford, like I said, you know, you drive by it and you see it or some of the cities. I'm not, I can't in my head picture having gone by those, right, and seen the layout of those facilities.
I, I know what you're saying.
Um, and so maybe I just got to get that more in my head, um. To be fair to you folks, but I.
I think you more like the multi-level building that probably have parking spots around. The perimeter of the, of the building lot.
Which is sort of half of what this is, though, you, you agree that the vast majority of the units you're offering in this. Particular project are interior where people don't have. Like at some of the other facilities we already have in town, there is a designated exterior door that you pull up in and if you're two feet away from it or ten feet away from it, that's. Your area, right, here you're having, there could be a hundred other people coming in the building, I know it's not.
That would be great.
It's probably not unrealistic, but when we're talking about safety and somebody's life, if they're in. A unit all the way at the front of the building where there's no egress except for all the way in the back and. If you're on the first floor, if you're on the second floor, you have to go all halfway through the building to get to the exterior door. Where's, where's the front door?
There's egress on each area.
Right, almost three quarter, two-thirds of the way towards the back of the building. So I am in, if I park out back and my unit is all the way in the back of the building. Now, now the front of the building. I still have to walk all the way down there and sure, there's an emergency egress out to the stairwells.
Yeah.
But that's still all the way back there and that's where people are going to park in.
So if I could, so in the storage units that you guys have in town. The storage units that most people build, the, uh, width in between the building is twenty-five to twenty-six feet. In between each building. And so somebody can park over here, somebody can park over here. And that's okay. So there's already a standard of twenty-five. In between these buildings. We just built a parking, uh, storage spot in Westfield, there's not one parking. Spot in the whole place, there's three spark parking areas in the front. For people to park, but there's no designated parking in the whole facility. And I'm not sure that there's designated parking, parking in the facilities here.
Where's the one in Westfield that you're talking about?
Right on, uh, Bootch. It was for, uh, Chiver. We just built the three year ago.
Where is it, I'm sorry? Okay.
So there's no parking areas in there, never, we, wasn't even discussed.
If, if I may too, uh, this is William from Frank Ruff. Uh, we, we do a lot of, we have about, we've done about fifty million square feet of self-storage. And typically it's preferred that you have designated loading areas, there's actually certain jurisdictions that actually specify. The quantity based on the area of the building. One thing to be heard is that the building itself, as you mentioned, it'd be nice to have a hundred people there, but. It's a very, very low intensity building. So the likelihood you're gonna have multiple people there at once is very low. And very, it's more than likely it's gonna be like a seasonal type thing anyway. Um, there are multiple entrances and like how Jim had mentioned, there, the egress does comply. Um, if there is. An issue with someone loading, Jim had mentioned, it's all about how the building, excuse me, is managed. And Jim can attest to his management of the building and it is all monitors. So if there's someone there that is lackadaisical and is not following the loading. And that would be on the operator and the management to comply with.
Is there? Another facility of this size? I mean, I presume that there's data out there as far as.
We've done, I've done multiple buildings with, uh, very, very large buildings that we only have two loading zones for. It's all about where it comes down to for storage, it's not even just about egress to get into the building, it's. As you had mentioned, the board has mentioned, it's about the convenience to get to each unit. So that's why Jim had, uh, we had, you know, discussed and developed these plans to have multiple locations to enter the building. So we have multiple areas at the, the east end and west end to enter. So if, say if you had someone on the first floor, um, on the west end. They're entering on the west end and there's someone that's over there in that loading area, you can still park on the upper. Uh, side on the east end and go down the stairs to get to your unit as well. Again. Typically what we've seen and, uh, based on statistical data, there's about four to six people a day at most.
In a facility of this size.
Yes.
Says that there's four to six people showing up per day.
I've done, yes, I've done buildings that are actually much larger, that that's the same data too.
Fair to say that would be probably after it's loaded, you know, so the initial load phase would probably be a little bit easier.
Yeah, it, it's initial, exactly, startup, but after you get the building operated, um, like I said, we've, I've done a hundred and. Fifty thousand square foot buildings.
Um, and Michael, I, I'm certainly hearing the, the uncertainty in, in your voice and questions and I'm wondering if. Um, if it would be helpful to provide precedence of similar scale facilities and, and some information on how they. Operate and, and are lead out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious and I'll take a look at that one in Westfield, um, I don't, um. To be fair, I probably told you about it the other day, but I don't, I didn't look at it, um. I should have, knowing this was on the agenda, um. Uh, but, you know, I'm happy to look at that stuff, I, again, it's just, I gotta get it straight in my head of. This type of facility versus the ones I'm used to and. See if that changes. Where my head goes about this, but I, I still. I mean, the thing that. I'm trying to work through the back area and, and how that plays out. I have a lot of trouble with those side. Entrances and how that's set up, because I just don't think that's enough room. Um, I think that's asking. For problems to have twenty-six feet there. And have entrances which you're gonna have to. Put bollards out there to. You know, I, I don't know how far out to. To keep people safe and you're gonna have people parking away from the building so they can get out of the car. Depending on what size those vehicles are, because you're going to a storage facility, so a lot of times you're gonna have larger vehicles. Those sides bother me.
So it started to cut you off, but if you could, uh, imagine, um, you're going into a storage facility, you pull up and you back up to your door. And another car. Entered your lane and sees you and starts to come. Um, we ran this place over here for, you know, uh, six months, my cousins ran their places for years, I was showing videos. Um, it's, people just crawl down, so. If I see you, I just crawl down at four to five miles an hour and get to my spot and easily park in there, so. There's no racetrack version, there's just a bunch of people storing their stuff and it's, it's not a commotion, it's actually just. Calm, it's, there's nothing speedy about anything, um, at any place, like I said. The standard is twenty-five feet, um, of, of lanes could be in between the buildings, in your own town, I, I think they're about that. Um, I haven't seen them, but if I, they look to me about, to be about typical. Um, and then.
Talking about the ones down by the transfer station?
Well, the ones that you have at the down that way.
By the shell station there?
Yeah, and then there's one off of, um.
Hudson Drive.
Yeah. And so his building, there's kind of about the same too. And, and, you know, in fact, he did this with the fire chief, um, and he's happy with it.
Just to respond to a couple of the details of the bollards, it's only supposed to be about five feet away from the door, a typical. Egress scenario from the door to be on both sides, so kind of two points, once you open the door, there'd be a space to be able to walk out the door and. You know, there's a vehicle coming by, the speed limit is set to be. Ten miles an hour through the facilities, it's very slow. If somebody's going through that sixteen foot wide, somebody does park to the outer edge of that, of that ten foot space to leave room to open their door. Uh, there's still sixteen feet to go, which is wider than a typical one-way. Road, uh, and people are not driving in the road, hey, so now going at twenty-five miles an hour down, down through this site. This is on, this door and, and the door in the north on the, on the west side are both located in, in level spots. Then the, uh, slope rises at seven and a half percent and then it's level again on both sides, so at least there. Neither door or loading zone is proposed in, in the two sloped locations that are, that are happening as the site rises. So there's enough space for people that amply get. So there's enough space for people that amply get around those locations. And yeah, certainly, if people are new to their unit, they're gonna take. Some time uh to to load their unit, uh. But most of the time, once then, once that's happening, if they're revisiting. Uh, for a period of time, there it's usually briefer than that, so, but yes, there's. There will be people that are gonna wanna uh stay here for a certain period of time, and it's up to. The gym to be able to say, well, those those spaces there, that those loading zones have a half hour max fee or a one hour max fee. Whereas they have parking spaces for staff in front, don't have a a time restriction set to them, so that's. That's up to Jim, who's running storage units. You know, previously has professional experience, obviously, do owning these and managing these, so that, um.
And how do you address ADA compliance issues with not having an ADA compliant? Spot for people? That never come up before?
Do you, the way that typically the handles for the interior units for ADA, they're all situated near the loading areas. So all the units that are near the. Once you do the calculations and the amount of quantity of units that are necessary based on the use, will be situated near the loading areas. So that will have load your ADA access, you have your push button, make sure you have make ev- everything is accessible. It would be up to, I guess, the good nature of everyone else who's around, when someone pulls up, that you're not gonna be logged, like, holding up the whole lane. But also to mention, you, the the, everyone can park in front of someone else's drive up if necessary for ten fifteen minutes as well. If this some, someone needs a run in or not. Um, I know we have loading zones, but not all these drive-ups will be entertained at all moments, um. Everyone does, the hopefully these will all load up, but it's not that to say that. You can't park in front of someone else's loading, uh, or unit.
I'm just turning out of the elevation of the building just to show that. Uh, at the, you know, northern, uh, at the western and and eastern sides, there are uh exterior loading doors and then on the. Uh, the north and and south sides, there are, there are those areas, those loading zones are not proposed directly in front of each of those. Uh, they're not striped in front of each of these exterior doors that are here.
They are, they're not.
They are not striped in those locations. It's not meant for an individual to park their car temporarily. In to block one of these units and then go inside the building. That's why there's the striped locations for those that are accessing the interior spaces. Versus to kind of designate a location for somebody who is renting an interior unit versus an exterior unit, they would. You know, just park directly in front of their unit, obviously, uh. You know, temporary, except for the one day they're putting it in and one day that they're un-unloading the entire unit.
They're parking in front of their, those are right on the corner, are they not?
Uh, these units?
Yeah.
Well, they're the, they're quite a bit away. These are ten foot wide doors. From, uh, and this is a five foot wide door, but that is still a. A a unit, a a rental unit, just a smaller unit.
But aren't people, you're you're saying that coming around the building. Coming around the building, you gotta come around that corner and there're probably gonna be people potentially parked. Right there in front of the doors. That they can load into.
There may be people that are, that are, that are, that are parked in front of their rental units, yes. But there's a twenty six foot wide lane, so there's more than enough ample space to move around the site, and you're you're moving through it at a driveway pace through this site.
Yes, similar to like the single-story drive-up buildings you have. If someone was going to their unit there and say they brought two cars, um. One car would park directly in front of their unit to unload and say. Mom or pop will be there, parking behind them. They will be situated in front of someone else's unit, but it'd be very temporary.
The uh. I say, I say the uh, let's think about this, the, that must be the western. Side there, right, there's a. There's entrance door in the bill there if I'm, if I'm seeing it right.
Uh, then.
It's on the west end and east end, and then there's egress on the north and south.
So where do the folks who are entering that door on the western end, where do they park?
They park in the. Loading zone area.
Then why do you have a?
Yeah, exactly. Where's the loading zone area for that western side?
The western side, uh, does not have a loading zone right in front of that door, uh, due to the request by the fire chief. Uh, uh, for that location.
What's the width of that area?
That's still, uh.
That's a twenty six feet.
I think it's actually. Maybe thirty feet, um. Uh, that's thirty two feet on this side of the building, so there's a little bit more room. As people are driving around, it's enough room for a, a a large fire truck to be able to navigate through the site.
I mean, so a large fire truck to navigate through the site, assuming that there are no cars there. All right on that? Second, there's a car there, the large fire truck cannot navigate through the site.
No, it's, it's designed, the 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 remaining sixteen feet is. More than enough. We've run the the turning diagrams and discussed this with the fire chief about getting the truck through there. Without traversing over those striped areas.
But there is no striped area there at the front door.
Right.
At the fire chief's request.
Yeah. So where does a person park? To get into that front door?
And Jim, I believe we had discussed that. That the the front door was not, uh, gonna be used for loading and that the that was gonna be a policy of the facility, is that accurate?
Yeah.
So why isn't there?
Do you allow for emergency egress?
Is it designed to be an emergency exit only?
Because right now it looks like the front.
Looks like the front door. I think I would just park right there, right, if I didn't know any better?
I mean, we've never viewed that. As, uh. Restricting, I mean, um, I don't view this as a racetrack. So, I mean, I'm I'm not, you know, looking at it from that perspective. I mean, uh, it seems to me that there should be a loading area down there, um, at least. Um, if there's somebody there. Uh, to be watching or something like that, there could be maybe a compromise where we are able to put something there. Um, just under supervision or something like that.
I don't think we're. Trying to make that a loading area. I just think that if there's a door there, that people will use it.
Well, that's what I mean, might be able to compromise on the loading area.
I I, but I, you see, you're you're. You're adding when we're trying to subtract, and that's not a compromise, that's actually going the other direction. I don't think that should be a loading area in any way, shape or form. Nor do I think there should be a door there that is accessible going in, because it's not. There's nowhere to stop there. Uh, there's no reason to have a door. I I I'm. Alright, um.
Anything else on the board? Um, what's the exterior lighting scheme?
Uh, so, yeah, Jim had been working with a a lighting company, and we, uh, still waiting to get, uh, plans. We'll certainly share them with you, uh, writing on what, at least the draft that I've seen, there's, there's, uh, down lighting, pole lighting along the entrance drive. Uh, and then there's, uh, wall stances, down lighting, wall stances. Uh, position, uh, around the building, all of which is, uh, you know, being designed so that there's no. Uh, lighting to to come off-site and it would be, you know, run, uh, not twenty four seven, but run during during hours of operation, so that there's. Not like this bright light that's happening all through the night, uh. Uh, uh, and otherwise kind of countryside in this area, so, um, but as soon as we have that, we'll we'll share that.
Yeah, and what are the hours of operation anticipated to be? Eight to ten, and so there'll be no, no access other than those times?
Uh, my office manager would be there, uh, eight to five. Uh, we're open on Saturdays too.
Let me just read into the record some of the comments, just so that we have them read in, um. And then if you had more, I didn't know if you had folks online, if they had anything to add to it, you can certainly do so, but let me just get through them, so that works. I have a minute, um, an email first from the fire chief. Uh, we have reviewed the newest set of plans for the storage facility at six six two College Highway. There's a question about the load capacity of the cupboard. And Randy Brown was going to look deeper and see if he can find out the design load. There will need to be a full set of plans, but permitting though, for now, things look good. Uh, we have. An email from. I don't know who that is. Be careful.
Kevin Soper is the. Water, uh, Way to Jump Superintendent.
Okay.
For DPW.
Fantastic, thank you.
Pardon, that makes the news title.
Um. So we have some DPW emails, um. Uh, first from, uh, Dick Frenelles, uh. Does the six sixty two A self-storage design have provisions for interior perimeter drains going to a tight tank? So any possible chemical release from improper storage of materials therein is duly captured and not allowed to leave the property and get into the adjacent wetlands or groundwater. The intermittent stream. Eventually flows by the town wells via the stream located adjacent to the town library. I would think that the design of these buildings would be similar to what was imposed on the Hudson Drive. At additional attic storage that is located on the same intermittent stream. Uh, email Kevin Soper, uh, I would certainly have to agree on the perimeter. Tight tank drains on these storage units at six sixty two A College Highway. Also, I feel that. It should be a standard rule on all public storage facilities for environmental protection. And then an email from Randy Brown, uh, DPW reviewed the revised stormwater report and plans for six sixty two A College Highway dated twelve twenty two twenty three. As prepared by Berkshire Design Group and offers the comments below. During the Conservation Commission review, the applicant previously noted that vehicles may be stored at the site and are required to be stored with one gallon of fuel or less. Uh, clarify if the fuel will be contained in the building, so. It does not leak outside and into the stormwater system. Uh, two, the applicant shall secure a trench permit, driveway permit, and new water service permit from DPW prior to construction. And three, the applicant shall secure an access permit from Mass DOT for any work within the right of way of College Highway prior to construction. Alright, so. Got those out of the way, um, was there anything else from? Your folks online that they wanted to offer or you wanted to offer before I move it to public comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um. So any town officials have any? Uh, comments on the proposed application? Seeing none. I will then open it up to public comment. Any public comments on the proposed application?
Um, I've sent John some photos of people. And some of the shenanigans, and I appreciate that there are a lot of rules. The one down on the gas pool. That's great if people follow rules, but we don't know people that follow rules. Um, John has some of the photos. We're the guy emptying his unit out, yeah, like garbage truck. Park there, and you empty his unit with garbage truck. Basically block the road, but our facility is set up like a beach. So if you come around the corner and it's blocked, you can back up, go around the next corner. Right? Little different setup. Um. I feel like you guys are planning on the right track, but people are gonna park everywhere, anywhere. And do what they want. And office manager or not. He's not there twenty four seven. We're not there twenty four seven. Go get cameras, all the black roads. And mention it, but right down in there. And support your your thought, Ron.
Um, any other public comments? Alright. Uh, anything else from the boards before?
I recall a lot of commentary and discussion the last time about just the size of the interior of the building and. Access by firefighters deep inside the building and that kind of thing. Have all those concerns been? Addressed?
So without getting into the specific details, um. A lot of that was. The concern were the additional sets of stairs, which have been addressed, okay? Um, the plans I looked at. Show some of the improvements that were discussed, okay? Um, and again, these were recommendations. My purview, um, is the fire chief. Is strictly to make sure that it conforms to the codes that I enforce. Egress falls into the building department, right? But as the authority having jurisdiction, we were looking for to make it a little safer, not so much for entry for firefighters. But if anybody were in that building to exit, so that we have more access, okay? Um, so that would be really be a question for the building commissioner about the, the accuracy of the egress. And, um, exit accesses and alles and all those things. Um, but again, I I've worked with Jim, just kind of trying to come up with a. A perimeter on this building that would be accessible, and. That that was the whole thing, with people be able to get in and out of the building easily, more easily, um, than struggling with being. Deep inside that building, sure there'd be a power outage and and something along those lines, but most of those have been addressed, because of the additional stairwells.
How wide is the fire truck?
Um, our widest truck is probably, uh, nine foot eight maybe. Um. So.
And how long is the longest one?
Longest one would be about thirty eight feet, um, with the bucket in the tower, but that truck was literally purchased, so that it. Makes it down somewhere around and and, you know. North Bay and on tighter streets.
Yep.
So it it's maneuverable. But that's our truck. It's designed for, and most fire outlaws, uh, make it down most of the streets without any restriction.
Anything else from the board? Okay. Um. So I think we need to sort of digest these new plans, um. I kind of lost it in my head. Wasn't there something else that you were going to, other lighting? You were still working to get, I believe.
Our first, uh. Our, did you reveal town to like where?
I don't believe I have site illumination drawings.
Yeah, we can't afford that, but I think we need to bring the legibility of it, because it's difficult to read.
Yeah, we have all few of them doing it more.
Alright, so we'll get that, um. But, you know, give us, I think, to, we'll continue this out to, and we can put it on the next hearing, that's fine, uh, which is at the end of January, but I think we need to. Sort of wrap our heads around it and. Um. You know, I I wanna do some more research and just get things straight in my head as far as the design here. Versus other facilities and just get it, you know, I, it made better clear up. How I'm thinking about it.
Would it be helpful for us to provide some of that, uh, presence? I know it's something that Chris Chamberlain, uh, from our office had.
I I I have no, uh, problem whatsoever. I mean, that's, that's always helpful to give, to give me things to look at, um, you know. I mean, I'll probably do some of my own as well, um, but, um, but but giving. Me whatever you want to give me is perfectly fine.
Sure.
So that would help me.
Thanks.
Um. Alright, so. Unless there was an issue. With you folks, as far as the date, the next meeting is on January twenty third. Uh, two weeks from today, um. And. I propose continuing it to the same time on on the twenty third. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright. Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion to continue six sixty two A College Highway to January twenty third at seven fifty PM?
Dave's been so moved.
Second.
We'll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Alright, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Alright. We're back in planning time by, I'm seven fifteen. Two fifty College. Public hearing. Uh, we have a request for continuance. Um. Continue to the next available planning board meeting agenda. Um. So given that we will probably spend some time on six sixty two A at the next one, why don't we? And hopefully we can get the master plan thing done tonight, I hope.
Be nice.
Yeah.
Two members. I mean, I just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a fair point. No, it's a fair point.
Because as much depth than as the three of us could probably plow through, I don't.
No, no, no. No, no, that's right, and I don't, and I would, I would hold off until they're here anyways for. Voting on it, so, um, it's probably worth just doing it all in one. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, that one, that's, that's bad.
That's just where it was. It manifested itself right there.
Well, I took it at one point in time. My daughter needed it for. Um, alright, uh, so let's put. Let's put two fifty College Highway after seven forty-five. Uh, do I hear a motion to continue two fifty College Highway to January twenty-third at seven forty-five?
Dave Spina so moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Alright. That's all set. Um, so. Seven thirty, planning board review and discussion of the master plan. We'll defer on that until the next. Meeting to allow for. Uh, Mr. Sutton and Mr. Utzinger to be here. Where do we stand with them? Getting. Interviews for.
I want to back you up for just one second because the, uh, master plan discussion isn't either public.
Yeah.
Yes.
That is, you're absolutely right. We did set it up that way. Uh, it doesn't. Well, it's not, it's not a special permit public hearing, but. But let me, we'll do it the right way. We will, uh, we will do it the right way, um, so let me, upon a time. Uh, let's see. Why don't we put it to eight o'clock? Do I hear a motion to continue the master plan? Discussion, uh, of the remainder of the master plan to eight o'clock on one, on January twenty-third.
Dave Spina so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Alright, thank you.
Fourth floor, time's up. You asked a question that disregarded what it was.
Uh, no, 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 I just, I guess, thinking about voting on that and everything, where we stand with getting, um, in a. What were you calling? All, all associate member?
Associate.
Associate member. Like, I keep calling it an alternate member and I don't know one, but, um. I want to make sure.
Permitted top girl.
Yes.
The suggestion for a, a joint meeting. Uh, between, um, select board and planning board members, or whether to say those. Members and, uh, bringing in applicants for interviews was, um. Sent, did I say suggested already? The suggestion was made. We do not have, uh, either a suggested date or feedback to check.
Do we have applicants?
We have three.
Rains it pours.
About who we're talking about.
Yeah, let's just, we'll make sure that folks still are interested. They've come in over time, I suppose, um. So, um. Once they're interested, we can send around the resumes. Emails and whatever, so.
Okay.
Um, okay, um. On the discussion items, you said sound amount and we're gonna kick off at the request of the applicants?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, and that, everybody has that letter?
Everybody has it, but I'll be happy to put it back into an email or print.
Oh, that's fine. You guys saw that.
That we had before the last meeting.
There's some, there's a. Five, sorry. Oh, yeah, it was before the last meeting. There's a, I forget how many pages it is from Michael Phelps, uh, or Green Miles.
Green Miles.
Yeah.
This, okay, yeah.
Yeah, 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 alright.
So there's been nothing new on.
Yeah, we're sort of working through it, let's go. Alright, housing production plan. Planning board vote to approve plan is reviewed by E O H L C. I'm gonna give this up to you actually before I do. And I'm gonna do this. That's the good thing.
Yes. Have you seen that before?
Are you sent it to me? We answer, yes, that's fine.
Let, let me, I, I know there's a lot of, uh, we'll call it review items, uh, on the table at the moment, a lot of data to digest and, and think about. In ways, there are parallels between the housing production plan, uh, and the housing components of the.
High level, extraordinarily high level.
In order to submit it to the state, they've done a preliminary review, or I'm gonna call it technical completeness, um. T B P C has given us that final draft, following that review, planning board. Moves to approve and send it to the select board for them to do the same and then send it to the state.
Okay. And is there a timeframe on that?
Not specifically.
Fantastic. Um, I'm gonna defer and ask that, give me two weeks to take a look at it, but I'll put it on my. List of things.
Anybody wants a hard copy?
That'd be preferred.
Recognize that makes a difference versus.
Oh, sure.
Issue.
Yeah.
Is it correct?
As much as I like giving you a slightly different version.
On page forty-five of the housing production plan, what page forty is it on?
I will make sure I print the same version side for the remaining.
Well, that's not fun. Uh, alright. I suppose now that she's a full member, we have to like, yeah, yeah, you can do that to the associate members.
Yeah.
Uh, alright, suggested composition of the master plan advisory committee and related. I'm gonna, you know, keep deferring on stuff, but that's, I think. I think. That is worth having a discussion with Dick and, and Dave when they're here about that, uh, I think they did have some opinions on that.
Yep.
I think that's worthwhile. I will say. We have gotten in our first request to be. Uh, considered for membership on the master plan advisory committee, uh, from Cory Rowland.
So she was my top suggestion.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I.
Of course.
So, um.
Voluntar.
So I, you know, we will, we will talk about that and hopefully get. That together with the master plan at the next, the next meeting. Okay. Oh. These are my favorites. Revisions to the stormwater management permit forms. I can't think of anything I'd rather do.
There's nothing I like more, I enjoy more than bringing stormwater raging, uh, before. Any planning board, let's put it that way. It is a, that's a tree that keeps on blocking.
Um, okay, I'm gonna let you explain. What the proposed changes are. I mean, I know them pretty well. I would say I could pick them out if you want me to, but.
To be fair, uh, the change. Largely revolves around, uh, well, the biggest one is referring to the proper, um, chapters within our. Uh, there are, and we. Amongst the standards that are decided in there, most of them simply about carried over. There are a few that, um, have been added, uh, for the page two checklist. There you go, on the backside of that, yeah, um. Just to be complete and to help guide applicants. Through the proper document, since we have a handbook now rather than a file that folds every technical component, um, and. Third change might be a non-change. Um, I'm not fully aware of the genesis, uh, of the original set of forms. I presume that perhaps with assistance from outside or research to other towns. You know, they, they came on board. There's a, we'll call it a review checklist. It's always been, uh, clock front-facing. But there's a bit of overlap, um, and it's not a, it doesn't seem to compel any. Necessary additional submittal by an applicant, um, in light of that page two checklist. Um, so after thinking where any ground we just, uh, I write the conclusion that. The, we'll call it, it's a technical review checklist, it doesn't need, no, it needs to be forward-facing, it's just duplicates an effort, that's it. So the waiver request form and the stormwater permit application. Formed up before you report your information and this was not, this will, um. Be provided on the website.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm good with this. I like this for all our applications, right? I mean, to the extent that we can start. Putting these kind of checklist type things on there. I think that's great for. For every application we have. Um, I mean, it would translate well into the special permit. I can't remember, I could look that, um, there.
I'm happy to take a walk through that as well.
Um.
It might not take.
It's not urgent, but, you know, you know. Um, it's certainly something when we have time to, to look at, um. Is there a, um? Is there a requirement that the waiver be submitted with the application? And it can't be done afterwards?
I think you're borrowing logic.
From the.
Historic logic from, uh, subdivision, preliminary subdivision, so.
That's not in the stormwater.
That's cool.
Alright, I just couldn't remember. I know it's in subdivision, I couldn't remember this in there. So I just, I, if it was in there, I would want to put something. You know. Hey, you know, this is your job.
Yeah.
Um, so. Right, looks good to me. Anything?
Just one question, I, I suspect it's a carryover for what's always been there. And it's probably okay, um, the twenty days for the other commissions to provide their concurrence and whatever it is. Are they cool with that twenty days? Is that always been the twenty days and it's?
That is, is a carryover item, uh.
Yeah.
Put it this way, I have heard any. Uh, of any reluctance to date with. Uh, do these applications or other ones going now, I'm gonna call sometimes it's closer to fourteen, right? Uh, if we get materials in, we can still hit a publication date and it's. There's room on an agenda, send them out there, um. That I suppose is also. A bit of guidance. If something is sophisticated enough, then their, when their feedback, initial feedback at twenty days maybe. This is really sophisticated, an additional time, um, to review.
Okay.
Somewhere in there, there's double or double word, where is it?
Yeah, I mean, twenty days, really, I, I guess the only problem comes to summer. With that potential. Hence, but I mean, you're dealing with people who have town employees, right? So it's not necessarily boards who are not meeting. You're gonna have town employees who should be there.
Yeah, I think so.
So. Town employees are taking twenty day vacations then. Other problems.
It's the plan. I'm not gonna execute it.
Alright, looks good to me. Anything?
There's stuff we done and it's aesthetically pleasing to the eye. Used to spend their days moving boxes on the forms to make sure that they're all lined up and, you know, shadowed check boxes.
That's an extra, that's a level above, I must say.
I, I did, uh, take a walk to the waiting to find what I love.
Uh, alright. Um, so those are fine. I don't think we need to. Planning board's member comments. Haven't had one yet. Done, minutes approval. Everybody get a chance to look at both of them. Look at the one from today, yep. Okay. Alright, so twenty-eighth, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for November twenty-eighth?
With minor edits.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the, the one from today, I'm sorry.
Both, no, both.
Both, okay.
I can't find them, but, um. Eleven twenty-eight first, yes.
Do you mind if I invite Mr. Phelps to participate for now while I'm looking this up?
Sure.
He posted a comment in the chat that didn't save for this moment. I'm not sure if it has any remaining, uh, weight or concern. You see that chat?
No. Just to you. I do not.
Yes, I, I was just, uh, calling to, uh, John's attention. That topic, the suggested composition of the master plan. It's not advisory committee, it's implementation committee.
Well, you know.
We're, we're past the advising, we're now implementing, right?
We're, we're setting it up for twenty forty. That's what we're doing, the long-term plan.
Sounds good. I hope to be around, I hope I'll be here, but.
Your chair, your chair, so I don't know. Set that aside.
Yeah.
What in your calendar, twenty forty?
I am very happy that I. Asked, uh, for that participation, uh, and I can take full credit for that, you know, myself. Old habits are the break. This is door.
Page two. Under the two fifty College Highway. There's paragraph left sentence, stormwater does not need to be capitalized. Second paragraph. Second to last sentence, he read the safety officer Paul Miles email. Just doesn't quite read right, it should be, he read. Paul Miles is with a. Possessive email, something to. And then the third paragraph under there, um. The sentence where it says, so Mr. Levesque said he anticipates going before the zoning board appeals to the fact that there is a nine dollar electric bill that. It does support an argument that the non-conforming use has been continuous, not that it doesn't support it. Yes. Whether we agree that that nine dollar electric bill does. And, and that is it for, for the November twenty-two.
Do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes for November twenty-eight?
Dave Spina so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton.
Okay, December.
Page two. Um, under the appointments of the master plan, Diane Gale, when looking for an implement. Um, under the appointments of the master plan, Diane Gale, when looking for an implementation committee team, not coordinator. She was thinking of making the C A O coordinator of sorts, and probably that's where the language fell in.
Okay.
Okay, and very last page, the next scheduled meeting is January ninth, twenty twenty four.
Knew that was gonna happen.
Right past my radar. Let that be the last time that makes sense to you. For you.
Alright.
Guaranteed.
Do I hear a motion to approve the December twelfth meeting minutes?
Dave Spina so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Thornton.
Okay. Um, the one thing I think is probably worth getting.
This is supposed to be in the Planning Board member coming.
I know, I know, I wanna keep the streak alive. This is really, this is more administrative than comments necessarily. Um, I would like to um. I think it's worth having everybody weigh in on it, but I do, I think it's worth getting authority from the Select Board to revisit uh, the non-conforming uses bylaw and and open up a public hearing on potentially changing that. Um, there's a couple of reasons, um, we had to flesh out the thing with Mark two. Um. So that'll go into it, but I think it's worth at this point in time, um. Getting that sort of administrative process done so that we can get that on. It's not gonna go on for the next one because we've, we've now moved stuff a little bit onto that one, so we have to deal with all the master plan stuff, but I think into February, um. We can put it on in there. Alright.
Sounds good.
Yep, okay. With that, who wants to be, uh, Dave's up tonight?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second, Dave.
All those in favor?
I.
Okay. Good nights.
Cool.